The regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for July 17, 2014. And we'll start with roll call.
I want to take a quick moment to announce that the -- that the City Council appointed Bob Spears to the Planning Commission at their July eighth meeting. He happened to be out of town on a vacation, I believe.
That's how he got appointed?
So he will be at the next meeting, but I just wanted to take that time to announce that. But I'll take roll. Commissioner Spears is excused absent. Absence Commissioner Pevsner.
Here.
Commissioner Pascal.
Here.
Commissioner Fryman Hunt, also excused absence. Commissioner Buckles.
Here.
Vice Chair Goldstein.
Here.
And Chair Desai.
Here.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the agenda for tonight.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item here. Approval of the minutes of July 2.
Mr. Chair, I must recuse myself. I was absent.
Okay.
In the spirit of being expeditious, I will approve the -- I move to approve the minutes.
All right. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've reached the point for audience comments. So at this time, any person in the audience may address the Planning Commission concerning any item that is not listed on the agenda. The Planning Commission welcomes your participation and input. When addressing the Planning Commission, please begin by stating your name and address for the record and limit your comments to no more than four minutes in order to provide for an orderly and timely meeting. All right, seeing no one coming forward here, we will move on to the public hearing portion for tonight. And the first item, hillside development permit 1201, HTP 1201, and conditional use permit 1208.
Thank you. This is a request to allow construction of a two-story, 3,313-square-foot, single-family home on property located at 610 Baldwin Court. The applications for a hillside development permit and CUP, conditional use permit, were submitted to allow construction at 610 Baldwin Court. The applicant is requesting that the Planning Commission continue this item to the August 21, 2014, meeting to allow additional time to make further revisions to the proposed project. He provided a letter requesting a continuance, and it's staff's recommendation to continue the item to August 21. Richard McDonald, the project representative, is here if you want to address him or if he wants to make any comments.
I'm going to need to recuse because I live within 500 feet, so while you discuss that, I will be in the hall.
Should we have the applicant come up?
Thank you, Richard McDonald, on behalf of the applicant. My apologies in advance for a horse throat, I'm getting over a head cold. But the attachment, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, we've met with. After the workshop on March 6, we made a number of revisions based on your comments, put those forward for tonight, and then went on and kept meeting with some of the neighbors, and they gave us additional material. We thought we could come and just show it. After a while, we sort of concluded that wasn't going to work, would be a little discombobulated, might be a little confusing. So we took the plans and we're just revising them and want to incorporate what we've heard from the neighbors as well, which I think we'll probably refile in about a week and then be ready for August 21.
I got a question for our Development Services Department. I know that the city is going to vote, or has voted, on a building moratorium, okay? Do we keep working on all this stuff?
Well, this property does have an existing water service connection, so the moratorium would not affect this property.
Now, there was going to be two moratoriums, right? There was a water hookup moratorium, right?
Right.
And a building moratorium.
Right. And the building moratorium basically states that no new water hookups or no issuance of building permits or land use approvals for those properties which do not have an existing water service connection.
Okay, so what's the difference between that and a meter moratorium?
It's essentially the same. It's a water service connection.
There's already water meters up there?
Yes.
So we're going to, okay, so.
I know there's irrigation.
Before, one other question. Do all those properties up, all those lots up there have building?
They all have water service connections, yes.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. McDonald? No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so do we need to?
Unless there's any other questions, you know, if you wish to make a motion for continuance.
All right, I'll move to -- do we have a date certain?
April 21.
Okay.
No, August.
August.
I'm sorry, August 21.
I can motion table this till the, to a date certain, August 21.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we will move on to the second item in the public hearing. Tentative parcel map 1305, TPM 1305.
And Derek Purification, our assistant planner, will make the presentation in a PowerPoint.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. The project before you is tentative parcel map or TPM 1305 at the property at 75 North Cannon Avenue. Just some project information on it. The current lot size right now is 24,424 square feet. It is zoned for a single-family residential, or also known as R1. The general plan designation is residential low density. The proposed subdivision is proposing to have two lots, one at 16,055 square feet and the other smaller one would be at 8,369 square feet. They both meet the minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet in this particular zone. Currently, right now, the lot is developed with a 3,090-square-foot house, which includes the garage. It is currently under construction right now. There was plans to demo the garage, about 193 square feet of it. The reason for this is to provide a required 15-foot setback in the rear, basically in preparation for this subdivision. With that demo, there were some other alterations. It's not part of the tentative parcel map project, though. But after the demo, it'd be at 2,897. Here's a vicinity map. It just kind of shows you the location of it. Cannon Avenue going vertically, it's between Highland Avenue and Montecito. And again, another map of the location, here you can see where it actually exists. Just going straight into the actual tentative parcel map, it's a little hard to see, but here in the red, that represents the actual proposed subdivision line. Here in the blue, that is 193-square-foot demolished garage. This would give a 15, minimum 15-foot rear yard setback. This is the existing single-family home, and this would be the western parcel, the 8,000-square-foot one, and this is going to be, obviously, the 16,000-square-foot one. Going straight into the findings, there are seven findings that have to be made, and staff has found that there are four findings that cannot be made. I'll just go and go through all four of them. The first one is the proposed parcel map is not consistent with the general plan, in that the general plan policy, C 31.3, requires that new development be contingent upon the ability to be served by adequate infrastructure, including water. Given the water shortage, given the water shortage emergency conditions faced by the city, the continuing drought, the worsening conditions in the Raymond Basin, and the uncertainty of the ability to continue and obtain imported water from the Metropolitan Water District for existing customers, the city has adopted a water service connection moratorium and therefore cannot provide a new water service connection to serve one of the two proposed lots that does not have an existing connection, thus deeming the proposed subdivision inconsistent with the general plan. The second finding that cannot be made is the proposed parcel map will be detrimental to the area in that one of the two lots proposed for the subdivision would require a new water service connection, which would exasperate the water shortage emergency conditions faced by the city. The third finding, that the design of the subdivision is likely to cause substantial environmental damage, that one of the two lots proposed for the subdivision would require a new water service connection, which would exasperate water shortage emergency conditions faced by the city. And the final finding, that the design of the subdivision or the type of improvements is likely to cause serious public health problems, in that one of the two lots proposed for subdivision would require a new water service connection, which would exasperate the water shortage emergency conditions faced by the city, thus rendering the proposed subdivision a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare of the city. That pretty much concludes my presentation. The staff report has a resolution recommending denial of the project based on the four findings that cannot be made. I'm here to answer any questions. Mr. Bowden, the applicant is also here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Derek?
Yes?
What's the average parcel size in the area? I mean, I know, because there's kind of some, I mean, if you count the Marsa State, I know it's cute.
I don't have an actual average, but I do have the range. They vary between about 7,421 and about 19,635. So this is, in the area, it is one of the larger lots.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question.
Sure.
Is the applicant required to make street improvements to the north side of Mariposa? Because currently, Mariposa is about 12 feet wide.
Montecito.
Oh, Montecito.
Oh, Montecito, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah. Uh-huh. And actually, Public Works, as well as the Fire Department, they did have them require that they widen the street, you know, for fire access and also for, I think there was, I want to say about four and a half feet for utilities and... Where is it? Yeah, 4.65, actually, foot-wide easement for ingress, egress, and utility purposes. That would be on the south side of that property, the two properties.
How much additional width to the street is going to be added, then, per the applicant or by the applicant?
I believe it's be about four and a half feet.
That's actually the easement, but it would be additionally, I'd say it's close to maybe 16 feet.
Okay. Okay.
Sure.
Seen the total street width, is 16 feet?
Yeah, I'll just intervene a little bit here. I'm Todd Bowden, the applicant. Are you going to open the public hearing or should I speak now, or you want me to just answer the question on the paving?
Well, we're...
You could answer it.
Let's have the applicant.
Okay. It's 20 feet clear from curb to curb. That's the Fire Department's requirement, and we'd be installing a new curb and gutter on the north side of Montecito, as well as a small retaining wall to shore up that, you know, the lot is about three and a half to four feet difference. We'd be putting in about three and a half foot retaining wall as well along there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Should I?
I just have a question for council. I wasn't at the last City Council meeting where the moratorium was passed, but I understand through the grapevine that the other lot split that we had recently approved and sent to them was denied on basically the same grounds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So is this really out of our hands at this point? There's no discretion here, right?
There really is not. You will not be able to make the findings based on the requirements of the general plan. And the fact that this lot, as it is now configured as a single legal lot, has one water service connection, once the lot would be split, the requirement is that it also be served by utilities, including water. It's not going to have that because of the water service moratorium, and there really is nothing that you can do.
And there's precedent now as of the last City Council?
There is precedent. The applicant at the City Council meeting was faced with the same dilemma. That applicant chose to withdraw their application so that once, you know, the moratoriums are temporary, and once the moratorium is lifted, then, and they have the option of keeping the fees on file, and then those same fees have been paid once, and it would apply if they wanted to continue their application in the future. That applicant elected to receive a refund of their fees, but they made the decision to withdraw the application so that the council did not have to actually hear it and ultimately deny it, which was the recommended action that evening.
And do we have, has this applicant been advised of that same option? They can withdraw it and save the fees and have them refunded rather than have us weigh in on it?
I believe that's true, but I'll let Mr. Castro answer that.
Yes, I did speak to the applicant regarding this, and that, you know, that is an option that he has.
And still has?
Yes.
Until we vote?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. Good evening again, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Todd Bowden, representing the developer or the applicant for the project. Just a quick recap of our project and how the approval process has transpired. The original tentative parcel map application was actually submitted on November 13, 2013. On December 13, 2013, I received a completed application letter from the city, and they assigned a planning commission date of January 30, 2013. Fast forward eight months and six resubmitals later, based on plan check corrections, things that, additional requirements that came in. A week ago, moratorium was put in place, and now I'm coming in front of you guys looking for a project that I'm not going to get. Totally understand. As of last week, I had the support of staff with positive findings on the application. With an emergency moratorium put in place one week ago, I went from having a project in front of you that meets and exceeds all development standards and city requirements to a project that creates a public safety hazard. The City Council made the moratorium effective retroactive by not excluding existing applications, including mine, which should have been in front of you guys several months ago. The reason I come before you tonight is not to look for a denial of my project, I'm actually requesting a continuation of the application to the August 21 meeting. And the reason I'm looking for that is the council is going to relook at the moratorium on August 12, and I'd like to have an opportunity during the public forum to at least speak in front of the council, as I was not able to last week because I was actually uninformed of the meeting. No problem with the city, I know they have their posting requirements, they met all the requirements. So what I'm coming to you to look for is a continuation to the August 21 meeting, see where we're at at that point in time, keep my application in place, and then I'll make the decision on whether to withdraw the application or proceed with the application in front of, in front of you folks. And that's what I'm looking for this evening.
So, follow-up question for council. So if we continue this, he talks to the City Council, the City Council extends a moratorium, at that point, does he still have the same options, or is he, can he still postpone his fees, or is that it?
Well, that would be, that would be up to whatever reviewing body he is in front of at that point in time, which I believe would still be the Planning Commission because it would have been...
Would have to come back again.
Yes, he would have to come back again, and at that point, you could offer him the same option to himself choose to withdraw the application.
Okay.
Rather than to have it denied.
Great.
Do we have any other questions? Nope. I mean, I guess you could, we could continue it. I mean, the point being, you want to continue it pending what happens, transpires at the August 12, City Council meeting?
That's correct.
In relation to the moratorium? And at which point you may pull your application?
At that point, I may withdraw the application if they extend the moratorium two years like they're talking about, yes.
All right. I mean, I don't think it, I don't see, I don't see an issue.
My only question is, I had, I've read and heard and had people talk to me about the, our local paper not getting a notice in about the water moratorium. So I, is it going to be at the 12th, July 12, or August 12 meeting that we'll be talking about?
It's a special meeting, it's a special council meeting, just for this issue.
Okay, so...
I read it on the website today, so I hope that's accurate.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, we're extending it past that, so we're not going to be doing this dogged pony showing.
We need to make a decision on the extension before August 21.
Let the public talk. Yeah, I was going to say, so since we're hearing it, I'm going to open it to the public. So, thank you, Mr. Bowden.
Thank you.
At this time, podium's open to the public to speak on this item.
Barbara Lee Klein. Because I'll have to wait to see what City Council says and then come back to the Planning Commission, because I was going to question the lack of garage or garages, but I'm going to wait on that. It's kind of a funny place. I got up at City Council once and said, "Oh, we were guaranteed El Nino according to the farmer's almanac." And then whoops, climate changes again, and the government says, governor says, "Oh, yes, we really do have a drought." So, and I was one that was pushing for the building moratorium for lack of water. So I'll follow this up with a couple of meetings, but now that I've verbalized it, I hope that they do have plans for two garages, because otherwise it doesn't meet the other requirements. And yes, I'm glad you guys are following the general plan. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else? No takers? Okay, we'll close public comment on this item, bring it back to the Commission. So do we, what's our action to continue it?
Yeah, you make a motion if you wish to continue it to the August 21 date.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we postpone this to August 21.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are at the discussion item, draft general plan update review. So Danny, I think you've got a few items.
Yes. Well, staff took the opportunity to place this on the agenda. We know it's not your first meeting of the month where we reserve it, but we thought perhaps we could get ahead of schedule. And, but this is regarding the general plan update, and specifically, this is items that were, where the Planning Commission is to give staff direction regarding policy language that the Commission had previously reviewed, but asked either to provide further research or to bring back at a later date for further discussion. So we went back to all the items that you had either flagged, and there weren't as many as I thought, actually. But we thought this was a good time to bring these back to you for discussion. And so my suggestion would be that we just go through each one and discuss it through, and I'll give you background for each one. And what was also included as an attachment are the language that was in question, but in its context. So we basically took an excerpt from the general plan update, so you see that text in question in its context. With that, I can just begin with the first one. Chapter 1, Section 1, its land use characteristics. Item 7, there is a deficiency of recreational open space in the city. And at your meeting in December 2013, the Commission asked staff to provide the source of the statement and whether there's a reference in the city's park master plan to this effect. Staff was unable to find such a reference in the master plan, and however, we were able to identify the rate of recreational open space per population size, recommended by the National Recreation and Park Association Standards and Guidelines. And Serra Madre Parks more closely fit the definition of neighborhood parks, which has a recommended ratio of one to two acres per thousand population, per thousand people. The city has a total of 25 acres of recreational open space, and the population is approximately 11,000. So therefore, it does meet the National Recreation and Parks Association Standards and Guidelines. It's about 13 acres per thousand, so it exceeds that, that standard. The, you know, the question is, and if you go to your attachment, it's like page, second page of the attachment, you know, it, in its context, it states the land use characteristics and begins on number seven, there is a deficiency of recreational open space in the city. The question is whether you wish to maintain this language or revise the language if it's in fact a desire that the community wishes for additional recreational open space. And I have a suggestion, if you wish to change the language so that it still maintains, you know, the desire to have recreational open space. But I leave that for your discretion.
What's the suggestion?
Okay, my suggestion is, additional parkland and recreational facilities are desired by the community, and then it would be, and then to be followed, in order to create additional open space opportunities, it is likely that the city would have to purchase land at market rate for that purpose.
And delete the, there's a deficiency statement?
Delete that there's a deficiency, unless...
Yeah, I would even go so far as to include these sentences here that show why we're in compliance. I mean, I would, I think there's nothing wrong with citing this reference, right?
Reference the source.
Pardon me?
Reference the source, the, actually, sure.
So reference here?
Yeah, I think so.
Reference source.
And people, if they ask the same question we do, then you don't have to look it up again.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Are you okay with that recommended language? Or do you want?
Sure. What this is referring to is not parks, but it's to baseball fields, softball fields, soccer fields, that kind of thing. So I'm not sure if the findings actually support what this was intended for. So perhaps the language should just refer to playing fields or sports fields, not so much parkland. That's, that was why that was put in there.
Okay. So do we need to reword that a little bit?
What was your word, Danny?
Well, the word I had, and I don't, if it, let me know if this is in any way consistent with what Councilmember Damar was saying, is additional parkland and recreational facilities?
Or sports facilities.
Or additional parkland and sports playing fields?
Sports facilities.
Sports facilities are desired by the community.
Fabulous.
And that's, that's accomplished.
But I would like to include these couple sentences here so that people understand.
Danny, in order to create...
Before or after, but just so that we understand why we think we have enough based on the current population and the current footprint, based on the national...
It would have to be a citation and not really in, because this is a...
However, just so that it's easy to find if someone in five years wants to know why we made that point, had that point of view, so they don't have to come back and dig up this memo.
Okay. Well, that takes care of that one. Now, this is number two of four. Residential low-density neighborhood conservation policy L 6.1, and it reads currently as, "Require that all adjoining neighbors of new or expanded existing structures and residential areas be notified and invited to have input in the approval process for any new construction that will exceed one story in height or significantly increase the volume..." or significantly increase the volume of an existing second story. So again, at your meeting in December of 2013, the commission discussed this policy, but it did not make a decision as to whether it wishes to maintain as is or revise or remove it. There was just some discussion, but it wasn't, wasn't resolved.
Yeah, I think the key word there is require, and I think if we can soften the word require, you know, be open to hearing or solicit reasonable feedback or some such thing. I think require was the thing that was giving us a little heartache.
Well, I, I think the word requires what we need because if, you know, if you're trying to put a second story on a structure on your property, you think your neighbor's not gonna want it or has some complaints about it. You should be required to let them know that it's coming rather than one day they happen to look up and they got a construction crew raising a second story someplace.
I mean, to that point, like, isn't this require that all the, more like implementation in the sense of like notifying?
Well, it would.
Like we had notification process, right?
Right, I, I think what, in taking the way it's written now, and how we would implement it would be, we would have to create some, some standards and guidelines. So when anyone is building a two-story home, it would be required that, that notification is, is provided. And we would establish what that notification radius is.
They have to be noticed anyway under Planning Commission guidelines.
Right. The thing is, is that in order to have a forum in which they're all invited to, to have input, it would require something like a conditional use permit. It wouldn't be, right, for every, for every two-story home, essentially, it would come before the Planning Commission for review because that would be the only forum in which you have sort of public, public input.
How else would you do it without a CUP, without requiring a CUP?
At the counter?
Well, you, you would have, you could do a, like a minor review, like a minor conditional use permit where it doesn't rise to the level of coming to you as a planning commission. There's still a notice. And then we receive letters. But it would be subject to particular findings and also appealable to the Planning Commission. So it, it raises the oversight for any, whether you meet the code or not, the fact that it's two stories would require a greater oversight and discretion.
So right now, if they don't require a conditional use permit, they're not over 4,000 feet, et cetera, et cetera. And they wanna put a stu, no, they just wanna put a second story on their home, and they bring you the plans, and the plans are good. They don't have to tell anybody at all? They can just start building?
They can, you know, as long as they meet code, we review it, and they go through plan check, and they can get their permits.
And have we had surprises in town to this effect?
Yes, we had one. The guy, the house on Lima. Remember, we visited his neighbor's house? He had a nice, oh, you weren't here. Yeah, we visited the neighbor's house and, and we talked to him, and as soon as he objected, he just sort of walked away, and then the project got finished, but.
If you recall, that was sort of the impetus for doing this angle plane height that's now a standard in the zoning code.
I, I would encourage, anytime there's an additional square footage that's gonna be added to a house, that the neighbors be notified. Not just two-story. Even if somebody's gonna expand and do a room addition out to within five feet of the, of your fence, you'd like to know about it. Not, not when the construction crew shows up and starts.
Yeah, but if it's within code, single story, I don't see where it's gonna be a problem. It's when, because usually what happens is people are looking, they, somebody's looking at their backyard and their bedroom windows. They're missing the view of the mountains. That's where people are.
But, but you wouldn't wanna be notified if your neighbor was going to add square footage within five feet of your fence?
Yeah, I mean, we went through this with the British home, right? Cause there was somebody's property abutting it, and they said, you're gonna move your rec room within hearing distance of my bedroom. I mean, so, I mean, you have a point.
I mean, the only heartburn I have with that is, right now, there's no mechanism really.
Right.
Other than it burdens more projects of, that meet or fall within the guidelines to come to this forum to be heard. If we're gonna do, that, that's my only heartburn is that this, I mean, some of that to me is like a good neighbor policy. Like, I mean, you're.
Yeah, but, but.
Be nice. Put some teeth in a good neighbor policy.
Right. And I, that's not even to say that the project can be denied or shut down because the neighbor objects to it. At least the neighbor's notified.
If you passed something like this, or if we eventually passed a general plan that included this, would then, that require municipal code update as well?
Yes, it probably would. We'd, we'd have to address notice requirements in the municipal code for types of kind of over-the-counter approvals where someone would otherwise just have to, you know, they'd go pull a building permit, but they wouldn't need any per se fancy discretionary permit. So yes, it would.
Barbara Lee, can you put a mechanism in anything over above 35 feet? And that triggers the notice and triggers them to go ahead and.
Yeah, we could do any of those things.
But the point is to make this enforceable, there's gonna have to be municipal code to support it.
You have to municipal code and create standards, whether there's some level of application review that has to be done. Because in order to have, in order to, to record that they're, they have in fact notified neighbors and in fact have, you know, have been given the opportunity to provide input in a timely manner, you know?
And I'd assume there'd be additional cost for that, too, so.
It may, because the thing is, is whether it's the city noticing or the neighbor showing some type of affidavit of noticing to the city before they make their application to.
So, not suggesting to go there, but just going on a little fishing expedition. What would be the downside of requiring a CUP for anything that was going from one to two stories?
I don't really see a downside. It's probably just more, more review for, if it, if it comes to the commission, you're gonna have a lot more.
What if it requires a minor CUP for anything going from a one-story to a two-story?
More oversight at staff level to.
But then there's less expense to the applicant, that there's transparency, so people know what's going on.
I mean, as it is right now, you know, you. As it is right now.
Less than coming to council, than coming to commission.
For, right now, you know, you have your zoning standards and your R one. If you meet them and you don't, you don't trigger a CUP, then it's, or a minor CUP.
I'm just trying to figure out how to make it the least administratively burdensome. How, how, how often does this happen? In the last five years, how many people went from one story to two stories?
Hundreds.
Hundreds?
Yeah.
That's a natural.
I really, but the problem is, I really don't look at like, do we really care if we have to do more work? We're volunteers on this commission. If you don't wanna do the work, get off the commission. I mean, if this is, if that's the reason why we're not gonna do it, I wanna make sure that the, the public is aware of this going on. I mean, there's some houses in town.
I'm certainly not saying that. I'm trying.
I'm not saying that, you know.
No, but I, but I, I heard that there's gonna be a lot of more work coming to us, and that's not, you know.
I don't, I don't, if the work is the right way to do it, I don't think anybody's saying that.
I mean, my, my problem is the fundamental aspect, we have codes in place. We have land use guidelines and zoning. And if a project falls within that, you know, that we're saying, even if it falls within that, you still need to come before this body or director, Development Services, or however it works, and have a public notice to hear that project. And I think that's, it's taking some of the teeth out of, out of the codes we have in play. Like, I don't understand why, the point of that, if we have those in place. I mean, I understand hearing projects, I get that, but there has to be some threshold where, you know, you suddenly open it up where basically you're gonna hear every project.
Yeah, I don't.
If you are establishing zoning standards that you feel are, that help, that are safeguarded to issues that you feel are impactful, then it's relying on those zoning standards to be the guiding principle. But if you've.
Right, but we're gonna amend, we're gonna amend those standards.
But if you wanna amend the, that's fine, too. If you wanna amend the standards, that's the other way.
We just said that, if this passes, we're gonna have to.
I mean, the, the zoning standard could say no two-story development without a CUP. I mean, it could be that, that clear.
So give me again the downside of, of something that requires someone, if they're putting a second story on their house, to notify their neighbors. What's the bad part?
It's not, it's, it's a matter of just putting standards, you know, implementing it in our zoning. And, you know, creating, you, you can create all kinds of rules and regulations.
I mean, I, I think it, well, anyway.
Well, I, no, I kind of agree with Minish in the sense that if we make it too onerous, there's some cost involved that people are just gonna do some simple addition, maybe add to a second story that's already there or something, and that's gonna trigger this whole review process of, of, of the thing. We had a project where, at the end of the street, the people had already had this whole approval for everything, but it was, there was a minor change, I think, in their bathroom or something, and we had to, we had to rule on a railing and something else. And it was like, I don't know, 100 square feet. And we ended up, you know, almost designing the railing for them practically by the time we got done it, but they had to come up with a fee. And, and I think it even took us two meetings to do it. It seemed, you know, in some ways trivial because it was something they'd let go and then dragged on, and we got this hundred, you know, 100 square foot change from the upstairs. So if we were gonna do something, I'd like to make it as onerous, at least onerous, from a cost standpoint. If that's means percentages on the second story that triggers it. But I certainly don't think, even though there's some people that might object to their neighbor building right up to their, you know, limits of their, I think every one story would be too onerous.
But I mean, again, at that point, like, if they're building up to their setback, they are legally allowed to do that.
No, I agree.
If you have an, I'm, I'm not arguing.
One stories, I think I would have nothing.
Even, even two stories, in the sense of you're allowed to setback, and we've got additional safeguards and regulations with angle planes, step backs, things like that. But could I hear?
The end result of that situation would be two neighbors that don't get along. And, and the one would move out of the city. All I'm trying to say, try to do is to get the two neighbors to agree to the addition. Let's say that the neighbor was notified, and he went and talked to the, his neighbor and said, hey, can you reduce the size or move this wall over here? Then, yeah, okay, I can do that.
This doesn't give them a vote or a blocking, right? It just says notice them.
Right, and I'm not even saying that.
It says that it gives them a chance to have that dialogue.
Have the dialogue.
But they don't get a vote. I mean, they get an appeal if they wanna come here.
Yeah, and the whole idea, cause you kinda take it out of context of why it's in there, is really just to require that notice. And as far as how to do that, that will be entirely up to the Planning Commission and City Council and municipal code. And you can go as far as you want to, you know, insisting everything come before the Planning Commission, or make it very simple and just say you need to have an affidavit showing that you have notified all the neighbors around that you're building a second story. So that the, the neighbors then are notified and have a, and can appeal if they want to. So the intention was not to make more work. It wasn't to put more regulations and guidelines on people. It was really just to say, you know, to tell your neighbors you're building a second story. And most people will, but those one or two that don't, those are the ones that end up being troubled. So we just wanna make sure it's all out in the open, and certainly don't wanna put a lot of rules and regulations. But the, the purpose of the general plan is not to develop those zoning codes right now, but to put into place what zoning codes should come in the future.
Okay, one question for you, Denise. You just said one, one or two people aren't gonna do that. What's our throwback to the commission or the city to go, wait a minute, you didn't follow these rules?
No, what I'm saying is, most people, most, but most people in Serra Madre are good neighbors. And they're gonna say, you know what, I'm gonna be building a second story in my house, even if they're not required. But there are some that will not do that. There are some that will just start building, and their neighbors have no idea that's going on. It's those one or two that we, we need to say, that's the reason we need to have a requirement that you have to notify. I really believe that most people are gonna let their neighbors know, hey, we're building a second story, this is what it looks like, and have the good neighbor policy. But for those that don't, we wanna have a, a way that they do have to, to notice. Okay?
How do we enforce it?
You know, that is not the, the job of the general plan. That would be your job. You know, I think, I think Director Castro had a great idea. You just certain, just have an affidavit that you have notified, you know, the surrounding neighbors would be good. Just a way that they know and they can come and appeal it if they want.
I am gonna jump up again and piggyback on that. I'm actually looking forward to all of you, cause it's a wonderful planning commission now, and welcome back Bob Spears. Now that we have the building moratorium, water moratorium in place, I'm looking forward to all of you having some time to go ahead and clean up the codes in the ordinances and the zoning, cause it's way overdue, so many loopholes in there. So this might be your first to go ahead and put some teeth into what you want this evening. It's, it's kind of one step down below the general plan, but this is yours. Go with it and put some teeth into it.
I'm sympathetic to this. I think that there should be some communication required.
I don't like the word required.
Requires is a rough word because it does require some pretty strict drafting.
It would actually, it, it actually would be pretty simple. At its most basic level, it truly, the city could simply put this as a requirement on the application plan. So it's a requirement for the applicant when they come in, whether they're gonna come to the Planning Commission or just an over-the-counter approval. It's right there in black and white, and until they've satisfied that requirement.
Building permit.
To, to a director's approval of plan check, and of course, the building.
They have to pay money for that?
An appellant would. An app, the, a right of appeal is not free. You, if you want, you know, you have to put your money where your mouth is. If you wanna appeal something, you have to plunk down your appeal fees and come before the body. That would all be addressed if you're looking to see some teeth, but really, that's the philosophy behind notifying your neighbor, and.
So that's the inverse of the CUP. In the CUP scenario, the applicant pays the administrative cost. Without the CUP, then the person appealing it, the burden of the, of the complaint falls on them. How much is it? What is, what does that cost?
First of all, the, the applicant is paying plan check fees to have it.
I understand, but they're not paying for minor CUP.
The way the appeal fee is, is currently structured, it's 75% of the application fee. So like a CUP is, you know, a good $4,000. 75% of that would be paid to appeal it. But because there's not a fee, there's not a, there's not a fixed fee for a building permit, it's based on the project valuation. We'd have to come up with a fee structure, and I, you know.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand. So we gotta, we gotta find a structure that works. So if someone finds, so we've noticed them, they talked to their neighbor, they don't come to a point of view. They gotta bring it to us so we can have a public hearing, people can hear it.
Right.
What kinda money are we gonna charge them to do that?
Well, you know, whenever we do fee studies, it's based on the recovery of costs for the administrative work to bring it to a commission, prepare whatever reports we need to prepare for you, and so we would evaluate that cost. Often, our fees right now in, in, in our department are, are not at full recovery. Just because that's been a policy decision of the city not to have it at full recovery. So it would be at some amount that is decided upon, and.
Can you make it, give me a range of what you think you would be, it seems to be fair. I don't wanna put a burden on somebody to be able to come in and say that, you know, I don't like this thing.
75% of $4,000, that's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money.
I mean, to me, that's almost like.
But I think you're saying that can, that will be adjusted or looked at.
It could be adjusted or looked at, yeah.
So I think that's.
I, I think we would, we would have to, we would have to create, and we would have to call that fee out in the municipal code because you don't want an absurd result.
Right.
And the other thing that I would point out, which has some bearing on someone's decision whether to appeal a very simple expansion of their home, of, of their neighbor's home, is that unless, as long as that application meets all of the code requirements that exist at the time, unless the city is going to develop some kind of design review or additional regulations, which while we're going through this land, you know, this land use and water moratorium is the time to look at those things. But unless that were to happen, an appellant would largely be wasting their money and time because they'd be appealing something that would come to you that, and, and if there was really no basis for denying it because it meets all of the city's codes and requirements, then you wouldn't, you, you wouldn't really have the discretion to do so. So that would factor in into it, too.
You'd have to come up with sort of that, put that threshold at a, at a, at that level, not at the level of when it comes to a. Cause you, you know, as you know, when you review CUPs at the Planning Commission level, you have a set of findings. They meet the code in many cases, but they have, you have findings in which to make. Well, we probably have to create criteria in order to have a basis for appeal. Because if you're already meeting the code, but you're putting a second story, to what extent do you, do we have the parameters in which we, we can make a decision off of that, you know? Because it's beyond, you know, if they're already meeting zoning code, what you're asking for is somebody can appeal that decision.
Well, it could be something like it blocks viewer or something like that.
And again, that gets to the implementation part of it, when we create that, but that, that would have to be.
Or views into your property, whatever that case may be. I mean, the other point of this, I'm not sitting well with the word require on that, but further down it says, be residents in the area, residential areas be notified and invited to have input in the approval process. So what do you, what is invited to have input in the approval process? I come to the counter and I say, well, I think the wall should zig instead of zag here, or I don't like your choice of color on the stucco.
You know, administrative hearings.
Or you could amend that language.
I don't think that should be.
You could amend it, yeah. Because the way I look at it is you have to have some formal place to meet if you're invited to have input.
Well, yeah, two separate statements. Hang on, those are two separate ideas. One is requiring notice and the other is inviting input. Those are two separate actions.
And I, I think there, there shouldn't be the inviting input part. The notifying is one thing, and if there's issue with it, let's say, one, they weren't notified, or they were notified and they have some issue, that's the appeal, the, the right to appeal that. But when you say input in the approval process, that, to me, sounds like they're coming alongside formal, in some formal way, the project, project, their neighbor's project, and having input as to the shape and makeup of that, potentially. Which I think, you know, if, if it's meeting.
Plus you have to, there's a burden of proof that they were invited to have input, whatever that means, you know? Was it listened to, was it documented, et cetera? Again, I'm sympathetic to the notice because at least it, it causes people who wouldn't otherwise have a conversation to be required to have a conversation.
I, I think the notification is fine.
And I think that that's fine, and then I don't think they'll need to be invited to have input. I think they'll, they'll have input on their own.
Or they won't.
I think, I think that will come naturally.
I think that should be struck, essentially.
Could be the problem.
Invited to have input. Notification is fine and great, I think, and if we can develop some sort of affidavit that.
So is it notified, and then you're striking and invited?
Yeah, and invited to have input in the approval process.
Yeah, I think that's right.
I would suggest that you, not that they're invited to have input, that you then, um, that the area, they be notified and made aware of the appeal process so that they understand that there is something that they don't like it, that they do have a process that they can follow.
Yeah.
Fine with that.
That's, that's good.
And that's easy enough to do because on the notice of, of information, they can just attach the appeal process and off we go.
All right, good, well done, yeah.
How about everybody?
Required, did we?
We kept required, all adjoining neighbors.
Yeah.
Be notified and.
And be made aware of the appeal process.
Yeah, we're requiring the notification.
For any new construction.
And the appeal process.
Okay, we'll add that.
For any new construction, it will exceed one story. We didn't go as far as Commissioner Buckles, so, unless you want to argue for that.
So let me just repeat, require that all adjoining neighbors of new or expanded existing structures and residential areas be notified and be made aware of the appeal process for any new construction that will exceed one story in height or significantly increase the volume of an existing second story.
Well, but, okay. So to, to your concern, Matt, that even a single story, like if you're adding on, some of the same issues could be present if it's significant enough.
Yeah, and one story.
In terms of blocking a view or whatever.
You know, what's the limit of the height of a one story? I mean, then we would be adding some kind of language about in feet and relative to grades and all that, so I, I don't know.
Remember, you're gonna be having a lot of granny flats come to you, and you're gonna be having a lot of redo's since we have the moratorium. So you're gonna be seeing a lot coming to you, so just, just reminding you guys.
And we like it here.
But is, is Councilmember Delmar said that maybe this will be discussed in council?
Well, no, we should send our best draft to council.
I mean, what I'm trying to.
We shouldn't kick the can.
Matt, I'm trying to argue your point.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
But I mean, like, right now, we measure height, right? One-third of the roof distance or whatever.
Right, right.
So in theory, you could have a single story that's twenty-five feet, right?
You saw one last week, I think.
Wasn't quite, but yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is unfortunate, yeah.
I mean, to your point, like, I could build a twenty-five foot tall, single-story addition off the back of my house.
Depending on your pitch, yeah, I could.
Park an RV in it or something, I don't know, but.
What is significantly?
Well, yeah. No, but I mean, if it, if that's not in here.
Well, I understand that.
Then I don't have to.
Seize one story, what does it significantly increase?
We would, we would make that measurement when we implement.
I got it.
Yeah, what, what that.
So then are you saying significantly increase the volume of the entire property? Of the entire structure as opposed to the second story?
For any new construction that will exceed one, exceed.
One story in height or significantly increase.
The volume of.
The overall structure.
Instead of just the same existing second story? For any new construction.
Or significantly is the volume of the overall structure? And then we're just gonna have to get code language that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I like that, and that solves some of your problem.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Should we change the word volume to mass?
That's valid. I mean, I think we should allow for some code language to address that. By doing that, I think.
Should we change the word volume to mass?
Could be volume or footprint, you know, or something. Really, we're talking about.
It's the volume of the overall structure, but it's the mass of the overall structure, right?
They're kind of.
I like footprint though, because then you're talking about limits of the property.
Volume and mass are kind of interchangeable.
Okay.
So it's either volume and footprint, you know?
Volume and footprint?
Is footprint really talking about the horizontal.
The overall structure.
Right. Okay.
Can I try it one more time?
Let me read it, okay. Require that all adjoining neighbors of new or expanded existing structures and residential areas be notified and be made aware of the appeal process for any new construction that will exceed one story in height or significantly increase the volume and footprint of the overall structure.
Or. And/or.
And/or, okay, and/or the volume. And footprint of the overall structure.
Perfect.
Are we, are we good? Okay.
Good work. We just saved you twenty minutes in council.
All right, so we are at item three of four. And that is insertion of Measure V language. At your meeting in March, the commission directed staff to provide an option of inserting the Measure V ordinance utilizing the format of the general plan document. What I've attached is an excerpt that shows the option of beginning with an objective and two policies followed, followed, followed by the Measure V ordinance as it's written. The, um, another option would be to simply insert the Measure V language under the title Central Core Area with no introduction. If you go to the, I provided the entire sort of commercial designation, so you see it, and then it's on page six. And what it starts with is, it, it has the central core area, the highlighted, I mean, the bolded text with underlined, and then it starts with an objective L thirty-four. Maintain residential density and building height restrictions in the central core area. And then the policies are two, L thirty-four point one, li- limit density, and I would add of new residential use in central core area to a maximum thirteen dwelling units per acre. And then an L thirty-four point two, limit height of new construction in the central core area to a maximum of two stories and thirty feet. And then we would add implementation, enforce Measure V, voters empowerment ordinance, municipal code chapter seventeen point thirty-five, which by its terms is set forth in full here. And so the, the entire following is the ordinance as it is written.
So, I mean, I was flipping through that, and it's several pages, so.
You don't have to change that, you just have to decide.
Was that, was that already there, all the text for Measure V?
Yes.
For the draft, yeah, we're inserting it.
We would insert it.
The. We can't reference it, but we have to insert it.
We talked about that, that's what we talked about.
Well, no, the, the Measure V language.
Discuss whether to append it as a reference document or to insert it with headers in the body copy. That's what we went back and forth on.
There we go.
So this suggests a way to, to set it up so that it can flow with the document as opposed to just reference it by appendix.
Got it, right. And again, the Measure V language specifically says that it must be included.
It has to be in here.
As written in the general plan.
Doesn't say.
So this, this, this introduction is really just to frame it, and then.
Got it. So, but we had central core area as a.
You did. Central core area was not, no, this would be an entirely, yeah, section that's, that's inserted here.
It was all new.
Now you'll see the, the numbering and all that, that, that is just because that's the way it's written.
Yeah. And what was the other option? This was.
Well, the other option would be just to simply say central core area and just put a language right in.
Yeah, I think this is better.
Yeah, it's only question is, do you want it in the body document with goals and objectives? Or do you want it referenced by legal inclusion as an appendix?
Well, we can't, though, it says it has to be in.
Yeah, but you could put it anywhere you want in the document. I think this is fine. I mean, conceptually, I think this, I mean, I was kind of on the fence just in terms of how the document would flow, and I think with the setup here, it flows fine.
And in reform, that you might want to put in an accolade or, I don't know, it's a call, so it stands out.
Okay.
Is central core area a defined term? Does it need to be a defined term?
It, it is defined in Measure V because it, it has a specific boundary.
Okay, so then it should be a capitalized term in the objective? If it's a defined term.
Oh, I see.
Do you have any other objections, concerns?
Then same thing.
At this point, you don't really have any choice of the language.
No, not below the policy level, but I just want to make sure. I think the part that Councilman Delmar's saying is, there are things in here we can change and things in here we can't change. And once you get into the body copy of Measure V, you can't change that. So it should be clear that that's inviolable, which is what I was talking about, we talked about before. That's an inviolable section, this stuff here can be edited. But to that point, central core area, if it's defined term, should be consistent, so it references that area on the map.
I think we're good.
Yeah, I think, are we good? Okay, let's go to the last item. And that's chapter three, section one, fire safety policy HZ five point four. And it reads as, identify funds by way of a tree assessment district or environmental fund or other source of funds to pay for vegetation trimming and removal of dead wood on public property and private properties where vegetation is creating a canopy over public rights of way. At your June meeting, Commissioner Pevsner asked why policy HZ five point four from the nineteen ninety-six general plan was removed by the general plan steering committee in the draft update version. Staff has confirmed that these funds have in fact never been identified or otherwise allocated by the city for this purpose. We, we checked around and we found that, that this policy is written, we rec, suggest, but if you feel differently, that it should be carried over into this new general plan update because it still remains a concern in the city from a variety of healthy, health reasons, fire safety reasons. The commission may consider whether this policy should remain as written from nineteen ninety-six or revised or removed. And I have it here in its context. I think it's page twenty-five, it's towards the end of your attachments.
So this, what you've inserted here is from the nineteen ninety-six?
It is, it is an exact, yeah. It is an exact carryover from the nineteen ninety-six. It was removed by the committee. And again, our, I, what I recall was it because it just was never enacted or there was not funding ever placed for that.
So I have a very technical question. Can you please elaborate on what environment fund is?
I think it's a term that was really just to, to create a. Oh, fund, oh, fund, yeah, I have here, can you add a D? All right, I don't have to answer. So we're not asking you to, 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 to say what this fund and where it comes from, but it's, it's more about creating some mechanism where.
To allow for it.
This, this type of thing can be funded, if.
So what are we discussing, whether we're putting it back in or not?
It wasn't there.
Right.
Yeah, I was. Yeah, I brought it up because I, I was trying to figure out if we should mention if there's funds identified, what they are so people know about them, so they can utilize them. And now that I find out we don't have any, it's a good thing because.
Right.
It was worth look, looking into, yeah. Well, I mean, there's. Excuse me? Oh, well, but there's, you know, that, listen, if there's, you know, money sitting around in accounts we don't know about, we, the city needs to.
I think you should share the fund.
Yeah, like in.
The tree trimming, sure, I'll, I'll start a, I'll make a nonprofit donation to the Sierra Madre Foundation.
Is that a commitment?
Sure, I will. It's tax deductible, I, I try, you know, people don't realize we have tax deductions, we can donate money to them. And we can even designate funds, correct? Right, Danny? You can say, it can only be used for this, this, and only this.
Just make sure you put environment fund in the memo.
Yeah, that was my, it's gonna.
Oh, we'll go to the wrong.
Where's the mud ball?
Do we, do we agree that to keep it?
Yeah, I think it needs to stay.
Okay. Well, that really concludes this part, then. I, I just want to make you aware that, as you all are aware, the, the council has adopted a moratorium that was effective immediately, it was on July eighth. And the moratorium does, the land use moratorium, moratorium does during this period, and the, the land use moratorium has a maximum life of two years. But during this period, it's important that the, the city enact policies or programs to, in an effort to conserve water. And what we intend to do, and council will give us also further direction, but what we intend to do is, is look at portions of the general plan that you've already reviewed, but to look at it, for example, the water, water resources section, and perhaps even the land use section, and begin to look at policies that you either want to remove because they're inconsistent with the, where we are today in terms of water conservation, and where we will be in the future. Or also, and, and/or add, add policies that would be consistent with, with water policy, water conservation objectives. And so, you know, as we continue work on the general plan, we'll, we'll bring back some suggested language, ask for your direction on discussion of some of these items, and then we'll get also further direction from the council how they wish to, to implement this program. But it's within this moratorium period in which we must look at policies that address water conservation. So.
It's part, it's part of the moratorium.
Moratorium, and it, not only with the general plan, but also zoning standards. You know, we, we may bring back R one development standards as they relate to water conservation. You know, create thresholds, for example, for review, there are a variety of things that we would, we may bring back. So this is kind of a heads up. Anything else, yeah? That's my announcement, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah. Danny, Dan, one question. I, I've heard, like, in the last couple days, that the state's cracking down on water too.
Just a couple days ago, they, they passed a, the state legislature passed a law regarding excessive water use and penalties that come along with that.
Right, the State Water Resources Control Board used its authority under the water code to adopt certain emergency regulations, but I'm happy to say that eighty to ninety percent of the regulations that, that were adopted by the water board as an emergency measure, Sierra Madre already had, so it's way ahead of everybody else. Those measures include such mandated things now, as you can only water your lawn. as you can only water your lawn, uh, twice a week. You can only wash your car with a hose that has an attachment on it that you can turn off. You can, uh, i, if you have a fountain, you can only use potable drinking water in it, a decorative fountain, if you've got a recirculating, um, pump. It's, it's little things like that. And most of those were already in our water conservation ordinance. There's a couple that, uh, the city will look to, um, impose as, or, you know, update its regulations. And the other thing that the emergency, um, regs did was, uh, uh, create a penalty structure. It's a little bit, uh, nebulous because what it says is that if you violate one of these things, you will be fined up to five hundred dollars per day.
Now, I understand that the state's doing all this, but I didn't hear them say anything about putting a building moratorium in.
No, they didn't, that's us.
Yeah, I guess those, those unions don't want to hear.
You know, I, I, I'd wonder if, uh, if there's some way that we can become more educated on how we can cut back and still keep our landscape. You know, I don't know how far I can not water the, the flowers or the lawn or the, or the shrubs. I mean, there's, there's, and we're told that we have to cut back by thirty percent. But how can I do that but keep my, uh, landscaping alive? Maybe there's somehow that...
You know, I was talking to a gal in town who happens to be an arborist. She told me what you're gonna see now, as you go throughout the state, you're gonna see a lot of trees dying, you're gonna see oak trees dying because the water that they usually get is down deep. And they're not get, that, that water's gone.
Yeah.
So those trees are gonna start dying. So if you have oak trees on your property, maybe you water those. I get sycamores on mine, which is a protected tree, I water those.
Yeah, I've got a hundred-year-old, uh, oak.
You know, I know we've got a lot of oaks around town.
I noticed this year, it's looking really dry, and I'm thinking, wow. I don't want to lose it, because it's huge.
I would suggest to call the arboretum, though, on the deep watering, because you really have to insert the hose down into the ground. There's a certain way to water oaks, because they really don't like water. But the arboretum will tell you how to, to do that. I know my parents, we have eight oak trees on our property.
We're gonna do that next council meeting, we're all gonna sit up and talk about it.
The, um, council's really dedicated to the whole education portion of the moratorium as well and, and to the landscaping, and making sure that we bring in some experts and have some classes to the... Because, you know, my yard's facing the same thing, we have to, to put some drought-resistant plants, but we want it to look pretty, and, you know, what do you put in there? And, um, I know, I've gotten a lot of emails from our residents, and someone gave me a whole list of plants that do really well here in Sierra Madre, the drought-resistant plants, and how many times you have to water it and all of that. So hopefully, as we go through this process, we'll get that, the education portion done as well.
And, and, and that's exactly, just to...
Denise, one second, please, before you go. You know, I, I know, Dan, I was gonna say something, I'll let him go, keep going. I walked by Sierra Madre City, uh, the school, and the front lawn there looks pretty green. Uh, who's paying for that, that water? Is that coming out of our, is that coming out of our...
It's not, it's not city water, that school district pays for that water.
Okay, and who's paying for, I'm sure the...
I know.
The grass is growing at the baseball field.
But as we, as we just heard from our city attorney, um, you know, we're gonna have to put some fines in for people who overwater. So we may, we may see that going away. But some, some of the, um, yards actually do look green, and they don't water as much, but they're really established, and they can kind of go through a couple months of not being watered, and you'll start seeing little brown spots. New lawns that have just been planted in the last couple of years, as I understand it, those are the ones that are most fragile to the, the no-watering and the type of grass you have. So we'll learn all about that as we go through this process. Okay, any other questions?
I was just gonna add that, um, the EENRC commission met a couple days ago, and, uh, staff has been preparing a, a lawn, a, a menu of options of possible water, water conservation policies that is gonna go before the city council at their meeting on August twelfth. And, y, you know, you will hear as a planning commission, because a lot of that, um, review process will come back to you. But they include everything from landscape design standards, for example. Again, looking at our current R-one standards, what we would do to modify them in an effort, in an effort to conserve water. There's everything from building code that may not come to you, but would be done as a, as a implementation.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think it'd be good for us to look at it holistically from a buil, building standpoint, you know? I mean, there's a lot of things, um, you know, I hate to say it, but you gotta look at the things that consume water, you know, in, in a, in a building or a structure, you know, those are your, your bathrooms, your, your other spaces. You know, how do you start to look at, you know, we've had projects where we've had bathrooms outnumber, not, the bedrooms, you know, uh, not quite two to one, but pretty close. And so, how do you start to look at those, those things, you know? I mean, it would be prudent for us to examine that.
And that's why, bringing it back to the general plan, and that's why it is worth, um, looking at these, uh, looking at the land use section and the, and the water resources section, uh, another, another glance through, but to, to, in fact, you know, modify, add, or remove, uh, policies.
Great.
Well, I know I had to laugh when they came, and they showed us when the one Carter stuff came before. So they had the houses, and they had the beautiful thing, the computer images, and they had all this green around the houses, I'm going, oh, they're gonna put grass all over that area, I'm thinking, yeah, that's gonna go.
Not until they build a canal to Lake Roosevelt.
Yeah. All right, we shall wrap this up here. Um, I wanna, uh, get to the oral communication portion of our meeting. Uh, this is for the audience, it's an additional opportunity for any person who wishes to address the planning commission on any item that is not on the agenda. When you come up to talk to the commission, please begin referring your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than four minutes.
Good evening, commissioners, I am Barry Gold, and I live at four-four-one Ramona. I don't think anyone could overemphasize the importance of what you're doing this evening. The, um, creation of the general plan update will be the vision for this city for decades to come. And I feel very comfortable that you are all, um, doing that which is in the best interest of the residents of our city. I, uh, I was reading over the information that was, uh, posted on the city's website concerning tonight's meeting, and an attachment to the staff report has a section called "Overview of Land Use Policy," and the first sentence is, "The fundamental principle behind the land use policies of the general plan is to maintain the existing low-density village characteristic of Sierra Madre in the same urban development pattern that exists today." I couldn't think of any better way to say what it is you are here to do. And I noticed on your timeline that at your November meeting, uh, you will finalize the general plan update for submittal to the city council. And I don't think I need to remind you, but I just thought it'd be a good idea to just read what the staff put here, what the purpose of all this is for, to keep our city the way it is. With the, uh, changes that you've agreed, uh, to put in the draft version tonight, I request that you, um, update the draft version and make it available to the public through the city's website so that we can all study it, so that at future meetings, we can make comments if we see that that's something we wanted to do. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. We'll close the audience communication and bring it back to the commission, anyone on the commission?
Just to follow up, uh, to my question last time, I'm knocking down the, uh, dilapidated story poles at Stone Gate, was that communicated and agreed to?
We, we have contacted the owner, um, and we've told them to do it right away. Uh, we'll call them again tomorrow.
Did they agree?
They agreed, to, to remove the poles.
In a timely manner? Excellent.
Yeah.
Now, the next time when you call them, you could also tell them, in the spirit of water conservation, to look at the sprinklers that are going on up there, which are unfrequently. My wife's called a couple times, and I don't know if they're on a timer or how they're coming on, but there's a good deal of water being sprayed up there.
Okay.
And it'd probably be a good idea if there were less.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess my, I have a question, just in regards to some of the stuff we're talking about. Danny, have you started to agendize some of these issues that we will be discussing?
Well, one that's coming up on your August twenty-first? And, and you may not think it's related, but it is, but it, uh, one of the commissioner, Gina Fireman-Hunt, uh, did, did ask to discuss the, um, the threshold, the four thousand square foot threshold, and in fact, discuss that maybe that threshold should be lowered.
So we're gonna see that?
So we're gonna see that on August twenty-first. And we will, again, uh, we're presenting a, a program of, of policies to the city council at their next meeting, and, uh, there will be a, there will, there will be direction from that and a workload to bring forward and, and evolve the planning commission's review. Because it involves zoning changes, so, and, and general plan. So what we will attempt to do is, is start to look at the months ahead and, and start, you know, once it's prioritized, we'll, we'll bring that to you and, and, and for your review. So, yes, I, I, I do think the next year, at least, in the next year and a half, we'll have full meetings regarding that.
All right, great.
In addition to completing the general plan.
All right, excellent.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
I'll throw it back to you, developments first.
I think I've said enough, it's what I wanted to announce, but, uh, your next meeting is August seventh, and...
We'll meet both days in August.
We will, we will. I, I don't, at this foreseeable future, I don't see any meetings we'll miss. But what we will, um, provide on August seventh is, is more of the general plan, it's the implementation portion, so we'll give you a progress report on that, and, um...
Yeah, I like Mr. Gold's idea of getting all the changes that we've talked about over the last, whatever, six, nine months into one red line draft and reposted so that people have one more chance to be heard. Or if they weren't able to attend a meeting where we discussed a section to weigh in, I think that's a real good idea.
Okay. And that's, that's entirely possible.
It'll also prove that all the changes actually got there.
We'll include the, the, the recent red line.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, I think, uh, we're done for the night.
All right.
Meeting adjourned.